Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 21st, 2025 Town and Rye Beck Planning Board Meeting. We have a quorum. Sharon will not be joining us this evening, and I'm expecting Craig, but we do have a quorum so we'll be able to proceed with opening the meeting. You have the posted meeting agenda, and we're going to be adding two very small items at the very end of the evening. That is Jim's going to give us his overview of the annual report that he presents to the town board, and then he's asked for a few minutes to answer the questions that Edna raised about jurisdictional determination. So we'll run through his answers to those questions at the conclusion of the regular order of business. You will receive Jim's meeting notes. Does anyone have any questions, comments? May I have a motion to approve Jim's meeting notes?
So long.
Motion second?
A second.
Almost in favor?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. You've received in draft form the April 7th minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or additions?
I move we accept.
For motion, may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Does anyone have any correspondence or announcements from before the board? Alright. Then we will move into the first portion of this evening's meeting, and that is new applications. The only new application we'll be looking at tonight is that of Stasburg Holdings LLC 3652 Route 9G, Site Plan and Special Use Permanent Training of Florence showroom. Showroom, sorry. Good evening. How many of you would like to come and try to follow me?
Yes, good evening. My name is Tom Angel. I'm a local attorney. And here, representing the county. Also with me is the project engineer, Joel Chase. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. I have the chairwoman did outline what we're seeking tonight. We're since getting a bottomed project, we have a transportation regarding the location, which would be the current location. For those who might not know where this property is located, it's on 9G going north on 9G from the intersection of Route 9 and 9G. It's right across from CJ's Pizza, and it's right next to the place where they have the self-storage area. Quite as far up as Rudy's, where he has the service station. It used to be a plant that thinks sold propane, and then I think it was a dry cleaning establishment there for a number of years that was more abandoned because it wasn't like a plant. So addition to the DOT, also in touch with the D E C regarding wetlands, because there are adjacent wetlands. They have been, come up with a boundary for the wetlands, and I think that it's actually, it's been moved a little bit into the parcel. I think the last time we were here on the CBA, we had an amended map, but it seems like the D E C is okay with where we plan to put the Florence showroom. We've also had the board help out at the site as well, again, potential septic system. So all the different agencies that will have to gain approval, besides your planning board, were in the process of contacting and working with, we've been in touch with each one of them. We also appeared with the CBA last week for their sub variances that we will need, and the CBA scheduled public hearing for next month on that. What we're seeking to do is to move the Foster Florence showroom warehouse from its current location at Stasburg to the location on Route 9G. In terms of volume, right now, they have an average of four visits a day to the showroom. A lot of their clientele, our institutions, Town and Rye Beck has spent some of their use time recently. The fairgrounds, a lot of their clients are institutions, they don't come into the showroom. They have between eight to 10 employees that would be located at this particular site, and that would basically be the usage that we foresee at this point in time. The footprint of the new building is similar to the existing structures that are there. It's not exactly the same, but it's located in a similar location. For those of you that have been by that spot, it is what I would describe as an eyesore, and I think we have a very nice project. And I believe we have provided you with an elevation so you can see exactly what the site would look like. It's under a different media set. We can go around.
Yeah, there's architectural drawings kind of show that.
And so the left portion would be the part that's facing 9G. This is what you would see right into Hartman. So all the way over to the left, that side of the building, if you don't see, would be the side that would be facing 9G. We will be providing complete elevations of all four sides of the building, and we will also be providing a computer rendering of what it will look like on the site. We booked that for you tonight. That was a request the CBA made, but our architect got it under the weather and was able to fill that request in a couple of days. That's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Okay, Jim?
So, number one, I just wanted to run through, you talked about the Department of Health, DOT, and D E C, so I assume those are all in progress, underway. So we waited for the jurisdictional determination with D E C.
That's correct. We have not received that yet, but we've been in communication with them, and we're hoping to have that soon.
We saw the wetland had been delineated by James Bates. I just didn't see any information that showed that he was a certified wetland coordinator, which is a requirement in the code. I assume he is, but just want to confirm if he's affected.
Yeah, we had initial walk with the D E C, Jim Bates and the D E C staff, and they did not, they kind of approximated the wetlands. And so basically, I went back and I showed it how we kind of discussed it, but then they wanted to kind of follow this field area, and so that's why the adjacent area is going into the property older now. You have to update this map.
The question was, is Mr. Bates licensed or whatever?
For what, the variation?
I'll double check.
I mean, it's, so you're not building in the buffer, so I don't know if it's as big a deal, but it typically would require a wetland delineator who's certified to do that.
We'll get that information.
It'd just be good to know if he is or isn't, like I say, since you're not doing any work in that wetland buffer, I'm not sure it's as big an issue. That's just something I'd like to confirm. You went to the CBA, so you're underway, looking at the variances, so that's good. You talked about the rendering showing the view. I actually had the same comment that I guess the, I guess the CBA did, which I would love to see, I think, a rendering that shows the building as we're looking at it from 9G. I think, one of my comments was that compared to other structures along 9G, this one is a bit close to the road compared to others, and I think it's a lot of massing along the road. I think it's going to be a little different. And that, so, you know, some of my comments were, if there's any way that, you know, you know, this is the storage area, I think, right? This is the showroom. So I didn't know if there's any way this could be pushed back a little further from the road, you know, to provide that separation. I also talked about, you know, maybe the need for some more landscaping. It looked pretty minimal to me. There's some here. I didn't see anything inside the grassy area here. And again, since it says the gateway road into the town, I thought those were some considerations the board might want to discuss, and something that could be looked at.
Do you want us to address pushing it back a little bit?
Sure, yeah.
Well, yeah, we're also trying to address, like, kind of screening the parking in the rear. So, I mean, the building, our choice was really to pick one side or the other for this. There's the utilities with that bisects the property right there, so we're limited kind of to that side, and we wanted to provide the maximum separation for the parking.
Yeah, and I admit, it is a small site. I'm not saying it would be easy. I do think, though, it's going to be a lot of massing. So seeing what that's going to look like, I think from the road is going to be important as well as that's just landscaping.
What sort of landscaping, I mean, that's certainly a possibility. What sort of landscaping would we think would be appropriate for that?
Just things that'll break up the massing of the building.
I presume there's no windows on that elevation, some air ducts or anything?
Well, no, I believe there are windows.
Window?
Yeah. Like, yeah, there's some architectural elevations on this, yeah. Yeah, this is, this is the one, the elevation along that you see.
So just some, you know, maybe into the other designs, landscaping, some other things to help break up that wall, since I believe it is a lot closer to the road than most of the buildings.
Are we looking for trees, or should, what would be, what would be the variation?
Variation generally?
Yeah, I think it is a variation. I think what Jim's suggesting, and others can comment on, is just to make up the mass of that wall. It could be some trees, it could be some shrubs, it could be variety things.
We can do that.
So what is the difference, what is the distance between the building and the recollection?
Yeah, on the side. It's to the property line, it's about 17.6 feet, and then the property line to the road.
You can see, I think we need to provide you with the details showing the current structures on the property.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, a couple, yeah, one more, there we go.
So this is that interesting concrete pad where, yeah, you just get the structure there. Yeah, so it's something to consider, and it's something the board may want to discuss further if you. Just a couple other comments. One is, you know, again, I know it's a small site, and obviously you get people in and out. There's just, there's a lot of pavement proposed here, and I know you've got the circular pattern here. I don't know if there's a way to reduce the amount of paving, maybe do something a little different. And then, you know, along with that, it appeared that the stormwater is mainly just going to come off the building and get in the pipes and work its way down into the creek. For me, this looks like a good phenomenal place to do kind of naturalized basin, and try and retain some of that stormwater, before it runs off. With planting some things in there, which again would then help with the visibility of the, you know, the front of the building and screening it a little. So, again, that's something I was going to require the planning board to discuss it, but I thought that I had something that could be considered potentially.
Understood. We do, we will have to maintain the separations of the septic system as well, too. So it's, right now, the initial location is, if we go over another sheet, there we go. Yeah, there we go. Septic area. We're proposing in this area now, which is kind of similar to the existing area.
Well, and maybe, you know, maybe part of this, maybe part of this can be considered that. You could be able to cut it off and make it permanent of some kind, and just landscape the rest of it. But I think it's just, it's, when you get the building in here, and this paving, and this grass, it's just going to be a very wide open area. Some landscaping, the ability to retain some water, you know, running off directly into the creek, that would be great. If that's something that's feasible from a engineering perspective.
We can work on that as well.
See, the only one I had is just, I didn't see any real details about lighting and signage. So lighting details will need to be cut off, they're expected compliant. And signage, you can submit now and have reviewed by the board, or you can do it separately. And you do that through the zoning administrator, who would then refer it to the planning board for review, and then come back to consider. We wanted you to do that, but unless I'm mistaken, I don't think I saw signage. Oops.
I'm just, just a caution to review the signage information carefully, because it's pretty specific about the amount of lettering.
In your code?
So.
Do you permit lighting and signage in this zone, or not, or, you know?
Yes. It has restrictions, but no interior lighting, downlighting. Again, you have to read the code. It's pretty, it's pretty specific. It's pretty tight zoning for commercial uses. We talked about this in the past, so it's pretty small signs.
What type of lighting would you like to see?
Dark sky compliant?
I'm sorry?
Anything that's dark sky compliant, I mean, within the building or anything like that. And we just want to see material shade of what you're proposing. I presume, I mean, presumably, your hours are during daylight, September, mid-term. We might have people coming in during the day, but certainly lighting around any entryways or anything like that.
You're not looking for the oval for example, to be lit, or anything along those lines?
The what?
We have to post lighting for the parking lot project, right?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I, because the color of the actual is glimmering.
So that's what it is?
I think you should think about if you need all that lighting.
Okay.
I mean, minimal lighting in that situation is preferable.
You were at T B D, there is a light height requirement here, so you do need to, you do need to fill that up. Right. I would say the lower is better, and it's even something nowadays that LED lighting can dim at night, which might be something to consider if you want to do that. If you can get the lighting, it's a module, you can add pretty much any light picture, so you can dim it at night. When, you know, if there's no one there, you probably want lights on, not totally dark at night, but a dim option would be nice, so it's not full brightness.
So we need some additional detail regarding the exact fixture that we're planning to use?
Exact fixture and the height of your proposal, again, make sure you're within the code right on.
You can buy them that as well.
Planning board members, questions or comments? Anyone?
Yeah, I was just by there yesterday, and was thinking, we're going to do something with this site. Because as long as I can remember, it's just been vacant, it's been tagged. And you're right, it is an eyesore, and in terms of, you know, a site that sought for development, this is certainly one of them. But it is a scenic road, and we would like to see some investment in, you know, creating an attractive context for, you know, what's really kind of the entry to our town, an important junction. Is there any kind of remediation that is required?
Not that we're aware of. We've, I've obviously spoken to the current owner of the property, who I don't think, I think they bought it from the gas company. I think the chairwoman did some research of your records, and I don't think found any information regarding anything that was violently in the sound in the site. From my recollection, I've lived in the area for a number of years. I just remember propane being sold out of that building. I don't remember anything more expensive going on there. I don't believe when they had the dry cleaning operation, there was anything more than a pickup and drop-off area. So that's my recollection, but obviously, I think we can write, no more, but that's what.
I understand the first one was based on the floodplain, is that correct?
Yeah, the floodplain is delineated on the site line.
Can you point out?
Yes. Yeah, the floodplain follows this contour right there. And it wrapped around the remains of the old slab on the ground over there.
One other question I just thought of, I did have in my notes. You have no issues with the 40-foot easement, back there, it's to work on that easement, or the utility?
We, there is no utility line there, as I understand it. It's just an easement that they have. So we can double check on that. It's Central Hudson, it dates to the time when the Astros actually owned this piece of land, so we will check and see. I don't imagine that there's going to be a problem with that, but we will double check.
Currently, there is a guy utility pole right there.
Is the septic system partially in the floodlot? Is it flooded?
No, it's, it's, this is the floodline right there.
That's not the old Huckle Bush line, is it? You said it's a Central Hudson easement, and not a, like, New York Central?
No.
It needs to be a real one.
I think the Huckle Bush crosses the line, I think it handles, either east and that.
I don't know if there ever was a utility line that went up there. There's no signs of it either, or that, no.
Is the variance because of the proximity to the front of the parcel?
Yeah, there's area variances for the front, side, and rear, because our building envelope. Can you please switch to the second? The building, this is the current building envelope.
Okay, I see. But you could push the building back away from the road, right?
Yeah, we still have to consider, I mean, the placement, we're trying to also provide the parking in the back, and maintain the parking. We're also asking for the variance for parking distance, right front yard.
And what is the necessity for the circular drive?
Just for the, this part we were showing as like a two-way, because the, you know, equipped the trucks, or like the employees and the vans can go back both directions this way, and we figured that the customer parking would just go around. Oh, I mean, that's.
Where's the delivery point for the warehouse?
There is an overhead door back there.
So the delivery trucks have to make that turn?
Make the way, right.
Would you like us to change, Bill?
I'm just trying to understand it, and why you made the decisions you did. I'm just wondering if there is some way to reduce the impervious surfaces that would be full.
Now, you have some that's paved, and some that's.
We're currently showing this area paved, and this, like, is stone finish.
And when they gave the, is the circle in front in one way? So that when the delivery vehicles come in, they make the delivery and come out, and then how do they exit from that point where they need the front circle?
Yeah, I mean, well, this section's two-way, so one, you know, and you go that way. But this is one way right now, it's shown from there around.
And those are parking spaces, the clients in the front?
Yeah, those are skewed. Skewed parking.
Anyone else? Jim, I wonder if you have a draft procedural resolution?
Draft procedural resolution from the board's consideration. Acting on the application by Stasburg Holding LLC for site plan, and special use permanent Town and Rye Beck for 125, for proposal to construct a 3,200 square foot flooring showroom, and associated 2,400 square foot storage building. It's a business service not listed elsewhere at 3652 Route 9G, but from the CRB zoning district. Except the application supporting documents is adequate for initiating and undertaking further review by the planning board. Classifying the actions unlisted under secret, which according to our voluntary review is not required, scheduled public hearing for May 19th, 6:05, and directed to undertake the noticing and posting. We'll send this to the C A B, we'll send it to Dutch County Visit to the Site Plan, and we need two planning board members to note site this.
Would you like to make a site decision? Sean?
Hello, Julie.
And Tom?
Would you like this present?
Yes. I would just have to you, whoever you designated to be there, and either Tom or Sean will be in touch with you. Should we get in touch with you, Tom?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll be in touch with Tom, and schedule a time for the joint meeting, so whoever you would like there as well. Alright, may I have a motion to approve the draft procedural resolution? So, a motion and a second, almost in favor?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Thank you.
When is the public hearing scheduled?
May 19th, at 6:05.
Thank you very much.
Alright, good luck. That concludes the new application, which is in this meeting, is moved into public hearings. I would like to note, for the record, it is on the agenda, that the Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss public hearing, which was scheduled for April 21st, 2025, has been postponed and continued to be May 19th, 2025, and in coordination. So we'll have to note that for the record. First public hearing of this evening is that of Justin McLeod, 546 Old Ford Road for the construction of a single-family dwelling and garage in the site.
Hello, my name is Carl Hanson. I am an architect and project manager for the art of building, representing our client, Justin McLeod. We were here last month to present this project, so I guess for the sake of the public hearing, I'll do a little overview of the project.
Yeah, a free overview.
Great. Would it be okay to go to the presentation document that we had? Hold on, I'm sorry. That is a care, sorry, this is the bottom of it. No, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, so our site is one of three previously subdivided lots in the middle there, sandwiched by Route 9G and Old Ford Road, just south of Permiss Oak Road. And, we are proposing a just over 6,000 square foot five-bedroom home with a just under 1,500 square foot four-car attached garage, and the appropriate driveway to serve those spaces. We are, we do have some wetlands along the site. We are gearing to the wetland buffer area and outside of all those, and also need all of our setback wiring.
I'll go to the next line. Oh, this is the old one, okay. We did provide an outline of where the old barns were on the sheet in our new document.
It should be the same name, like planning board presentation response, April 21st, 2025. April, what was that, I'm sorry? It would be L B six, planning board presentation response, April 21st, 2025.
Six, that twice.
Maybe we can skip that part and go back to what I keep looking, is that right?
Yeah. So. Um, so, uh, site is okay. We're, we're proposing, we are eradicating obviously trees for removal. Anything over six inches that we've identified here, there are 15. Any and all pathway, paths, walking paths would be done out of bluestone treads. All of our outdoor lighting would be dark sky compliant, downlights. And there'd be very few illuminating the path between the house and the garage. We have two existing stone walls or an existing stone wall with an existing entrance off of Worthburg Road that we are planning to maintain, repair, and reuse for our new entry. Uh, and we do plan on planting along the street as well, along Worthburg Road, a number of swamp maples as well, similar to the client's property across the street, if you consider. Uh, these are the trees identified for removal. You can see the garage is facing, or I'm sorry, that the house is facing off to Worthburg Road with the garage as the accessory building behind and the septic to the west, all of which still falling outside of our, outside of our wetlands. Ah, perfect, thank you.
Let's touch the bottom and open it.
Perfect. Um, as you can see, so as requested by the planning board at our previous meeting, we've since identified and overlaid approximately the best we can from the aerial we have where the original Dutch barns were located, which we know to have been demolished some time in the eighties. Because as of the 1990 aerial, there's nothing left. As well as from the last meeting, as requested by the planning board, we conducted our site visit by members of the planning board, CAB, as well as HAIPAC, who all came out to the site and saw that there was really no, no remnants left of, of those, those existing barns. In addition to, to support the Phase 1A survey that was completed by our archaeologist, indicating that she did not recommend a Phase 1B for doing any archaeological digs to confirm. We keep going. Uh, we'll keep going, a couple more, what is that, and a little more. Uh, one thing to note here that we do want to identify with the planning board is through discussions with our HVAC contractor, there's a slight expansion to the basement floor plan, which really just involves straightening out a couple of foundation walls that were less jogs in it, a little more efficient, and it provides a couple of extra utility rooms and simplifies our HVAC plant for where we need some air counters. This has no impact on the above-grade footprint. These were already held within areas beneath a couple of the patios, and I can point those out. So just this little closet here and this one as well. Foundation walls used at those locations, but we've just included those now to give us more central locations for our, our HVAC equipment. And again, as you can see on the first floor plan, those are both beneath two bluestone patios that were already going to be there and some landings for entry. Next line. Our elevation on the street, this elevation has our primary entry. The project has been designed to look similar to the context around as the property is part of the old Markart Farm. It's designed to be a simple gable-formed element that appears as though in addition has been added, you know, in years, after years have gone by and been added too slowly. So there's a one-story addition off the back that continues much in the historical style of the property across the street as well. Uh, materiality will be native sackstone at the foundation, running bond bridder for the chimney. Light fixtures would be copper lanterns, all dark sky compliant. These are fixtures to suggest the style that we are looking for, as well as painted cladded siding, copper half-round gutters, cedar shingle roof, and painted Marvin wood windows. Double ones as well. Uh, and then, do you know? The garage is a very simple gable-formed structure, single story. Per the planning board's comment last time about the building height, we've corrected the note on here to adhere to the zoning requirements. The building height is the average height of the gable, so we notified that, noted that there, and that is under the required maximum height. Other than that, simple four-bay garage. A note was also added that there, there is no loft space or anything like that. There is no second story to it or mezzanine. It is one story just for storage and service garage. Uh, next line. And similarly to the house, similar materials, except for we, in this case, we would be staining the, the Marvin wood windows, still native stone at the base, and natural wood cladded siding. Carrot-style doors and copper half-round gutters, as well as cedar shingle roof. So very much similar vernacular, similar language as the house, just stained or natural versus painted. So that covers kind of the overview of the project. And I'd like to take a moment to address the comments that we received previously and a couple of additional items that we have as well now. So as discussed, we've, we've addressed all of the planning board's previous comments. One of those was to send us to the zoning board to confirm, verify whether we needed a variance or not. We were attended the meeting last week, and it was confirmed that a variance would not be needed. So that has been closed and accepted as is. So we proceed with the design as, as identified. Second, we have also received our Board of Health approval for the septic design. And then the last item we were looking for was the jurisdictional determination from the DDC on the wetlands. That 90-day response period that they have has, has come and gone and passed. And as part of that, they are required to provide a waiver for five years. And so we are just simply awaiting the formality of their confirmation letter of that. But we received confirmation verbally for that as well. So there will be no further action from the DDC, and the project is accepted to move forward. Um, I think that covers everything. I don't have anything new except for looking through this. I just wanted to ask, are the lights going to be dark sky compliant? Because they appear to be glass, and this looks like it might go into the E there.
They are, the, the lights, the lights that we're showing here haven't been fully picked yet, but this shows the style that they would be in, kind of the shape, but they would be dark sky compliant. That's why our notes on there indicate that they absolutely will be dark sky compliant.
Or just, it's probably okay, but we normally ask specifically what you are putting on, not in the style of?
So if, I guess at the very least, you know, when this, if this was foregets approved and these are on the sheets, that that would have to be updated before, not even it's down the sidelines, they would have to be dark sky compliant.
Do we have to provide those prior to approval yet?
Um, well, typically, again, before approval, I'm saying if it goes through with that, it might be a condition that they would have to be on the, the sheets that you submit, a valid signature, before you can get them.
Okay, uh, yeah, I think.
If, if that's a bit, I think that would, that would be generally okay. If that's the style, they just have to be, you have to show what you're doing on there. So.
Yeah, that's, that's fully our intention, so we can get those selected promptly and provided.
Okay, it's part of the files submitted for signature.
Uh, and we'd be, still be able to get a conditional approval upon that, providing, upon providing that?
I believe so.
I'm just, yeah, just make it a condition.
Yeah, but you make it a condition, but before I sign it, you can go to the building department, I'd have to see that.
Understood. Does anyone comment?
Jimmy, I want to add as a condition too, just waiting for the formal letter from DDC regarding the jurisdictional determination formality.
Yep. Yeah, you have some important information on that, that does some questions, and we'll give you that at the end of the meeting. Provide more kind of insight into what is required and how this is supposed to go down. But we do need to get that official letter from DDC to close that out.
Yeah, at this point, it's, it's less of a, there's no question behind it. It's really just a procedural formality to get, to get that from them formally. But it's been already cited to us directly from DDC that, that that's the way it's going to operate.
Right, so if we put that in as a condition and for some reason DDC changes their mind?
Exactly, if you understand you're coming back and starting with processing, absolutely.
Just have to put that out there and make sure everyone's aware.
Who can that be, the site visitor?
I.
Yourself?
Uh, Sharon was there.
Oh, sorry, okay.
That's okay.
You can mark the board with your.
First off, it's a beautiful building, so it's flat and you've got the pond over there, that's really nice. And they're not, even though it's a large house, they're not using a large portion of the block. So it's not like putting a mansion on a tenth of an acre. So I, I don't know, it just seems really well thought out and good use of the property.
Did we get anything from HAIPAC or the CAB? Were they present with you on the site? We haven't received anything in writing. All right, planning board members, questions, comments?
I just have a question, for curiosity. On one of the elevations, there are two double-hungry windows right on top of one another. I was wondering, what, you know, what is that, over a stairway or?
Yes, yeah, that's a long stairwell, so that tall one is from the first and second floor, so it's just to provide lighting and that's their role.
And then the other one is basement?
Yes, yeah, going down into the basement to the next floor down. That's why they're, you know, staggered from the typical floor level windows.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I think, you know, that, that's one redeeming feature of the design, which I think is, otherwise it's a little bit too much like mimicry of the historic building that's across the street. And it's good to see features like this that, that, you know, clearly this is a new building that is trying to fit into a historic context and doing it gracefully with deference. The site, it also fronts, the lot fronts on 9G as well. Is, is that area forested? Like, is it possible to see into the site from 9G?
No, no, I mean, that's good. I think Tom can verify from the site visit, it's, there's a tree line there.
So there's big screening there.
There is, yeah.
So it's really only from Worthburg Road that you would see this, this building?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? I believe we have a draft procedural resolution here, all kind of heavily ahead of us.
May I, do you want to open it for?
Yeah, I was going to ask right now, is there anyone here for the public? If not, then I have a motion to both public hearings.
Make a motion.
Motion second, someone, someone in favor?
Aye.
Pose extension. Jim?
Approval resolution for the board's consideration for the application by Justin McLeod for site plan approval under town code chapter 125 for construction of a new home, detached garage, and associated infrastructure, 546 Old Worthburg Road in the RC5 zoning district. Reaffirming the action is type two, for its coordinated environmental quality review is not required. Based upon review of submitted information, finding that proposed work is consistent with objectives and regulations of chapter 125. And with respect to the application of site plan approval, finding that proposed work intended to use is consistent with chapter 125, and approving the application inclusive of materials and plans by Willingham Town. Engineering date February 21st, 2025. Authorizing planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the upper satisfaction of the three conditions listed there, and conditioning the approval on files submitted showing dark sky compliant lights and a copy of the DDC approval or waiver letter, whichever that may be. Taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant, along with details on next steps required to finalize the process, and authorizes others in the town to issue any required permits. Reminds the applicant that all plan sketches and other materials submitted to the town around my building department for any required permits, including a CO or certificate of completion must, must match those approved by the planning board, subject to the one condition listed.
Yeah, no motion. Someone, motion second?
Second.
I'll call the board, Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Can you use spark when I go down? Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Uh, the next public hearing for the CP is set with the Wildflower School, Parkland, 7085 and 7091 Route 9, site planned in special use permit for daycare and university school.
Hi, everyone. My name is Marty Wells. I'm the engineer for the Wildflower School's daycare center. I want to just give you a quick update about where we were with the process. Just a, uh, just to rehash what we're, what we're proposing here is. So, uh, so on our site, we're proposing a daycare center and there's an existing, daycare center within an existing building and a, there's an existing residential, three-bedroom residential structure on the site. There's an existing horseshoe-shaped driveway. At the moment, there's a 20-foot wide by 100-foot long access easement that, that provides access to, to each of these properties, each of these adjacent properties, the neighbors to the south, and also our property. And so at, at the moment, there's a driveway, a shared driveway extending up to the building. And what we've done as part of our proposed project is we've shifted our driveway to the north, out of the access easement while maintaining the access for the neighbor to the south. Her southern edge of driveway will remain unchanged. Access, uh, just as she does now. So in terms of where we are, we've got a couple of different reviews going through with the New York State DOT, with the Dutch County Department of Health, and with the New York State DDC. The Department of Health has given us conditional approval based on approval from the planning board. The New York State DOT, we, we continue to work through the DOT. We were hoping to have some feedback from them Friday or today, but that did not come through. So we're, we're hopeful that we are near the end of that process. We feel that we've addressed their concerns. And we're just waiting to hear back, to hear back from them for, for the review. Just a couple of things that we've, that had been updated as part of that review. At the request of the fire, the fire department for the town ride back, we increased the width of our driveways to 15 feet at the entrance and also at the exit. We, we verified that a single unit 30-foot long truck can access the site. Actually, if we could go to the second sheet, we're drawing. Uh, we, we verified that, uh, that there's adequate turning gradient distance or turning radius space for a single unit 30-foot truck. And also for the fire department's vehicle, the 42-foot fire department truck can, can access the entire site and can maintain that, can turn through the, the driveway there. We've maintained our parking, we've changed our parking up a little bit to make sure we follow zoning requirements, a five, five-foot sign yard setback. The park required to the zoning district are 25 feet off the front, front poplar. We have 50 feet, you know, that's the code for the, the front yard setback. We've, we've, uh, updated our site distances as the DOT would, would, at, at, at the DOT request. Uh, this, these are other things that we've added from the DOT review. They asked that we include trip generation data, how many trips are going to be generated each day on the site. We've included that in our report to them. Our, we've updated our turning, turning templates for the, for the truck. We've updated our stopping site distance. We've updated our stopping site distance and our intersection stopping site distance. We've provided, actually, can we go back to the first sheet, Jim? They asked us that we provide stationing. Initially, their stationing from the start of the driveway around the perimeter should have been the driveway. They asked us to start that stationing at the center of the roadway, continued around. We've done that. As part of the paving, we need to pave the shoulder in between the entrance and the exit of the driveway. So we've shown that paving for the top course that would be repaved between the two driveway entrances. There's a, the DOT says that we need a 30 foot spacing between our driveway and the driveway to the south. We have 12 foot spacing there. And so they asked that we fill out a, a non-standard feature justification form. We've done that. It's been accepted by the DOT. They asked that we specify 70 series compaction. It's just a type of compaction that the DOT requires a, a density gauge measurement of the, of the paving, for the, for the paved area for the driveway. One-way signage. There's going to be a one-way signage at the exit and also at the entrance. They asked that we put those on double posts as opposed to the single post where we had. We've done that. And, and there were just a couple leaders that weren't pointing out, out that one-way signage. So we, we've added, added the leaders to show that more clearly. So that's what we've done so far. I'm gonna let Paul describe some more of the process.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening. Paul Byrne from the other 2% of the Wildflower and Story Adventure here. Just wanted to speak a little bit more to the state agency approvals that Marty mentioned. As you know, Department of Health has given us preliminary approval. DEC 90 day period ends tomorrow, so we're very hopeful that barring any last minute issues, that we will not have any adjustments to make as a result of that. We've gone back and forth with Department of Transportation on multiple rounds of revisions. And as Marty mentioned, they had told us they would get back to us by the time of this meeting. Unfortunately, they did not. But we are very hopeful that we're very close with them. We believe that we've satisfied all the requests of the planning board and know that there is still one outstanding question of the preliminary approval from the state agencies versus the approval from the planning board and who does that first. Our lawyers have been trying to reach John Laine to discuss that issue honestly for months now and haven't gotten response. So do you have any advice on how we should approach that? We are very eager to get that resolved and eager to hear any other thoughts or feedback that you have. Our honest hope is that we can come before you again in May with all those state agency approvals settled and have a decision made at that point. So if there's any issues that need to be circled before then, we're up here.
Marty, you mentioned, maybe it was just the way you said it. I'm just double check. You had mentioned that you would look at the ingress and egress to 15 feet, but you carried that width all the way through, right? This, this is 15 feet, right? Which is what the park department wanted?
That's correct. Outside of those parking areas, Jim, we have 15, we have 15 feet.
Right. So this, this mention here is the 15 that he had asked for?
That's correct.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
Did that change the number of parking spaces?
If we go to the next sheet, we can take a look. I think we had 37 initially and now we have 36. Yeah, I counted.
So took care of the fire chief. We heard about county health DOT, the DEC jurisdictional determination. We're actually going to talk about that year later. We're all still learning about the process. But my understanding is once the 90 days passes, you need to write, you need to actually send in by mail, a hard copy to DEC asking for them to give you that letter stating that you're okay. You don't have any issues. So you have to get that and then they have 10 days to respond to you to come back. So.
That letter was, was sent today. So they will get tomorrow on the expiration of the 90 days. And yes, they have 10 days from that point. And what they've told us is that if you don't hear anything from them in those 10 days, then we have to have five years.
My understanding is that we have to, we have to get a letter from them.
Yeah.
It's actually a presentation I was just talking about later today, but we'll.
Yeah, I know there's a lot unclear around that still, but they did.
I just want to make sure you guys, you know, if you're going through the process, we're not having delays.
Yeah. So the language they wrote to us is send a letter through certified mail saying when this deadline, DEC, then has 10 days from the notice of receipt to respond. If we don't respond, then the parceling question will be deemed non-jurisdictional for a period of five years. That's their language coming out to us, which we have to share.
Nope, that's right. Okay. So that takes care of that one. And I still just had a couple of questions that have been in a memo for a while. I know we've talked about things a number of times, but things have kind of changed, tweaked a little while, I guess you'd say, in terms of parking. Most of these relate to that. One of them is that there's a lot of cars showing out here. And I know we talked before about someone coming out helping the other kids out of the cars. Are you also planning to have someone essentially monitoring and dealing with traffic, making sure that people are moving in and out as they're supposed to? Because I'm, I'm parent, I've dealt with this before, dropped my kids off at camp. It's been a nightmare. I had to do a traffic study for the place that I did this, because people were screaming about it. These two cars parked here, I'm afraid by parking someone here who really needs to get out. And then if you have these cars blocking them, it becomes an issue. I'm not saying you can't do it, but if I was a parent here who wanted to get out and these two are blocking me and this line is blocking me in, I have no way to kind of work my way out unless someone's stopping the vehicle traffic here to allow the queue to clear so that these cars can move so that this person can come out. So I'm not thrilled about the design. The same kind of goes for these two over here. And I understand that they are temporary, but I just know how people like to move in the morning, drop the kids off. I just see these potentially being a hassle, if nothing else, for people that might be parked there. They've been blocked in. Because I've had it happen. I've seen it happen. Where I was actually, someone drove across the sidewalk to get out because they were so impatient to leave. It just concerned, they were talking about kids. That's why I asked for the ballers. That's why I'm pushing this a lot because I've seen a lot of stupid stuff happen when people are impatient. And I, I just, I don't like these, but I'm not saying you can't do it. But I'm just raising it for that. I don't think it's great policy to block these cars in for drop off and things like that in the morning. So I just want to raise that. So if it does come up as an issue later, it will at least mention, and I'm not thrilled about that setup.
Okay. So, so parking areas, parking spots one through eight, they are teacher and resident parking. So, so theoretically, they shouldn't be open.
Technically, they shouldn't be, but if that's somewhere someone's going to park, it's a rainy day, it's either here or it's over here, you know they're going to go to the spot. Unless you're going to assign to it, it's a teacher parking only.
Yes. And also, and also there'll be an orientation for parking. So, so parents, prospective parents will, will, will be, will be taught about how to, how to access the site, how to park at the site.
Well, this is why I asked if someone's going to essentially be helping to drive traffic. Where I went, the director of the building is actually directing traffic every day.
And we will have, so we will have teachers outside, right, to help toddlers when they're unbuckling.
Right, right, yeah.
So the green spaces, too, they're five minute parking spaces that you're not getting out. You're unbuckling your kid, your, the, the teacher aides coming up and helping the kid into the, into the school.
So when you say five minutes, more, these are staying in your car and someone comes and gets the kid out, you're not, the parents aren't getting out of the car in the green spots?
No. So the blue line of cars is, is the orientation of movement, right? And so it was brought up earlier that, you know, it might take some time to buckle up once they're in the car or pick up through your block. They get in the car at that front door and then the kid needs to buckle up. And so what these cars in the green are showing is where someone can sort of pull over for a few seconds. It takes seconds to buckle a kid. And then they can, as I said, like, it's not a real parking and like get out of your car spot. Like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anyone being blocked in. That's a hazard. And so that's why they're in green to show you that they're just pull over, do what you need to do and get that child out.
They're specifically designed to keep traffic flowing. We know that that was a concern of the planning board and we built in these spaces where people can pull over just for that, like, literally a one minute buckle. Your child, so that you could safely then pull off as a result of the feedback that we got. Because we understand that we need to keep traffic flowing. We want to make sure there's no backup on the Route 9. As Marty said, this will be in the handbook that we provide our parents with. We will emphasize this with them. Again, we hear the importance of, of this issue. And we will have people outside who are taking children in and out of cars and also if necessary, you know, moving traffic along or directly.
Okay. Yeah. Again, I just wanted to raise it because I see it just potentially becoming a hassle. Not all the time, but that one time you have is all you need. So I just raised that as a thought. So that was one of the questions I had. The other big one I had is snow removal. I don't see anywhere that says dedicated for snow removal. So I don't know what your thoughts are about where you're planning to push your snow. Usually they go into a parking space. If you're planning on pushing it into the island, I guess that'd be okay as long as you're not moving up to the front here because we don't want to block the site distances for anybody. So the easiest thing I see is the clouds are going to come in here. They're going to run through. They're going to plow all up in here. And then the same thing going backwards. You want to keep that snow coming out in front here. So I think since they have, you know, you're out of time, you might want to put it on here somewhere or at least identify where you think that snow is going to go.
Okay.
Snow removal is a big issue, especially if you're talking about this much area for parking vehicles. We do not want that out. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We'll add that. And also where you see parking spaces six, seven, and eight, that is an open area there. That's the hill, the hill drops down. That's definitely, you know, assuming that the clouds are beating there while people aren't dropping their kids off, they'll be able to, to push, push, you know, well past those spaces and down the hill and that will not affect anything.
But this is going to be where the residents park their cars, right? I, I think you just need a snow removal plan is all I'm saying. If your residents are parking here, you're going to need to do snow. That's where you want to push the snow. That's fine.
Sure.
But you need some kind of plan for that because if they're parked in three cars there, you're not putting much snow back here.
Yeah, like nine, parking space nine, for example, that would be open. You just, yeah, you just need a plan to make sure you can deal with that because again, you don't want to see the snow in front of them. So we'll show that.
I think that's pretty much it for me. If you have any comments.
Planning board members? Is there a sign for the facility? No. There will, there will be no signs, which are sent out.
Not even on the building?
If you change your mind, you have to go to Ryan and submit a sign application.
Anyone else? Kim, anything?
No, I agree with Jim's comments. I think including a snow removal plan would be really helpful. And, and you said that you will be providing this parking map in the handbook that you provide to the parents? I think that would be helpful to them.
Sorry, what would be helpful? Just doing that?
Yeah, kind of providing this like in a handbook to the, to the parents, just so they understand the flow.
Yep.
I believe John Line has reached out to Charlie, got leave. I think it's a bit of phone tag, email tag at the moment, just to say we are trying to get a couple of choices.
Uh, that's good to hear. My understanding is that that is not the case, but we'll follow up.
All right, then we'll continue this public hearing.
Yeah, since 90 days is tomorrow, 10 days after that is less than two weeks. I think we should now push 90 days.
I agree. Gretchen, how does that look? Scheduling it two weeks up?
It should be okay.
Hmm?
It should be okay.
All right. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
What date are we talking about?
May, first meeting of May, right?
May 7.
But you think you'll be able to get DOT by then?
What?
We are, we are hopeful. We do believe we'll have DOT by then.
Well, if you don't, we'll just, at that point, continue it again. Let, let someone know with that motion to continue the public hearing until the May.
So, May 7?
Okay, okay. Is there anyone here from the public which would comment on this application? All right. So we have a motion to continue it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Got to close in favor?
Aye.
Extension, motion void. Thank you.
Thank you.
The third public hearing this evening is that of Rockledge, for 002, accurate for the site plan, special use permit for condo units.
Hi, good evening. Seth Stipple with Mark Kaminsky, BE LSBC. We're this evening to represent Hudson Valley Rhinebeck LLC and their application for Rockledge, an adaptive reuse condominium project. So just wanted to provide a brief update to the planning board and public on the status of the project. So that's the intent for the presentation this evening. Do you go to the next slide, please? So regarding our reviews by both the National Park Service, Secretary of Interior, and the State Historic Preservation Office, we just wanted to inform the board that for SHPO, the Division of Historic Preservation, Site, Store, and Cultural Resources, they had initially reviewed our project and provided a letter back in January. It had three comments in it. One of the comments was about some of the glazing in the Banner House. The second comment was about windows at the Stone Barn. And the third comment was in reference to our National Park Service application, just making us aware that we needed that approval before they could move forward. We've adopted all of their recommendations and updated and amended our plans. So they have provided a sign off letter for us as of January 25th, which does sign off on the secret portions and the historic adaptive reuse. Their comment was no comments or concerns regarding updated project as currently designed. Additionally, in, kind of at the same time, we've been working with the National Park Service, the Historic Preservation Certification Application. That application was actually granted back in January 23rd. And then due to the SHPO comments and the amendments to that, we went ahead and amended that National Park Service application. So the amended application went in and they have also signed off on the amended application. And the note on that was that it meets the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. So just providing copies of these two letters, which are public documents that have been submitted to the town. Next slide, please. We are also working, as everyone is, with the change to the wetland law as of January 2025. So the project team has been coordinating with New York State DEC directly. We actually have for this project, a valid wetland delineation map that was valid from October 2022 to October 2027. So it, since we've already been working with the DEC on that, we initially started with the DEC Regional Office for some guidance on that process. And because of the new jurisdictional determination law in effect, they requested that we still go through that process. So in February, March, we reached out and we contacted, like I said, the, the local signatories of the map, of Region 3 biologist. She essentially said that we should proceed with what they kind of consider a consultant review. And that allows our consultants to work directly with DEC. So over the last couple of months, we've had several meetings with DEC, been in contact with their staff, asked questions. On the 6th, we actually met with the local regional office in person, and that's where they suggested the consultant option. So we had prepared and over the time since then, a complete project jurisdictional determination plan. And it's a 91 page document that just really dives into the details of the weapons that we have on site and provides a lot of information for that. We could certainly submit that if the town felt that they would like to have a copy of that, but at, really that's, you know, for the DEC to review. That actually went in just on April 13th. So the DEC now has updated mapping for the wetlands as well as a full record on the wetlands, and they're in the process of doing that review. And one of the things that we just wanted to kind of indicate is that there was, in preliminary conversations, the DEC is interested in taking control over a few of the wetlands that are located on the site. So it will require some updated mapping. It did require some updated mapping for our site. The interesting part about this is that the town of Rhinebeck already imposes a 100 foot buffer on all of their wetlands anyway. So any of the wetlands on the site have. So any of the wetlands on the site have a 100-foot buffer associated with them. The wetlands that they've chosen are actually to the north of the site. And we'll take a quick look at those now. Next slide, please. So these are the, this is the old validation map table, and this is the new validation map table. Just sort of showing you this because you can see that all the wetlands previously were ACO-year town, except for one wetland, that's the large wetland that's been named on our plan for quite a long time on the western side along Acro Road. So the new validation table just shows you where these updates are. So Wetland C, which we'll identify in a minute when we look at the map. Wetland E and Wetland F will now all be DEC-regulated wetlands. The reason that Wetland C has been included is a preliminary determination that there are wetlands of unusual importance in that area. Those are vernal pools, essentially. We do have some potential amphibian breeding vernal pools at the north end of the road. The Wetland E is hydrologically connected and within 50 meters of Wetland C. So anything that's hydrologically connected becomes taken by them. And Wetland F has been previously mapped, as I mentioned. So we're just going to take a look at the old wetland map first. That'll be the first one we pull up here. So it just identifies that really the only wetland on site that was DEC-regulated was Wetland F here. And you can see that when you do a validation plan, you actually only have 100-foot adjacent area on the DEC-regulated wetland. They ask you to remove them from the other wetlands. So if we go to the next plan now, we'll see that it has been updated. So now Wetland F and then also C and Wetland E. I think it's actually E, excuse me, I can't read it from this distance. But are now included and have 100-foot adjacent areas. This is the kind of area of some off-site vernal pools, which are in context with these wetlands. There is a, you know, a segment of Wetland A that does have a connection to that. That has been identified as a drainage course. That's been reviewed with DEC and has been presented to them that way in our jurisdictional determination paperwork. And because it is not hydrologically connected by more than, I believe, it's 150 meters, there's just a different regulation towards that. Again, working through all this process with the DEC, they've just received that application middle of the month here. So that's really just the update on where we stand with wetlands. Next slide, please. Just a quick update of where we are with water supply and wastewater disposal. The, you know, WSP, our contractor, has been working with both Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority and Dutch County Department of Health for water supply. Their engineers' reports have required some minor adjustments and some plant changes to respond to those comments, and resubmission actually is going in this week. The wastewater supply, similarly, we're working with Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, Dutch County Department of Health, and New York State DEC, and that's ongoing. The engineers' reported plans have been adjusted and are due to be resubmitted. The change there is Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, who will be running the facility, is asking for some changes to the RBC, the rotating biological contractors. They'd actually like to have them upgraded completely as opposed to reusing old ones. So we're looking into upgrading them completely and building in a little redundancy, so we're also improving. And then the New York State DEC has changed their regulations to begin with January on ammonia, which is an additive used in wastewater treatment. So we're just looking at some alternative sources and methods to be able to achieve that updated regulation. So that's where we stand with water and wastewater. And next slide. And our application did go before the zoning board appeals for what was the unit shift from the Stone Barn to the Manor House. The two adaptive reuse lots, both five acres conforming lots, out by code are allowed four units each. We requested to the ZDA that there be a shift from the smaller structure, the Stone Barn of two units, up to the Manor House, the much larger structure. So the Manor House will have six, the Stone Barn will have two. And that variance was actually granted back in March, so we do have that approval as well. So now we are here this evening in front of the board to have any further discussion on what is the three-lot minor subdivision, site plan special use permit, and weapons permit. And if possible, we'd like to request just consideration for preliminary approval, at least for maybe the minor subdivision, as that helps us get through some of the steps with the health board. But obviously, we want to entertain any, whether there are architectural comments or any additional site plan or layout comments. We'd certainly like to get into those with board as you see fit. Seeing this is a public hearing, let's just.
Jim?
I have no new comments related to the project itself or more process. I guess the only question I'd have, Seth, is you said you were changing something per DEC. Well, the ammonia was the other, I assume it's some type of mechanical element in the structure. I just want to get clarification.
Yeah, that's inside the sanitary sewer pole thing? Yeah, that's a rotating biological contractor. It's a big drum, essentially, that is used to treat this wastewater.
But it would be inside the structure?
It would be inside the structure.
Yeah, just proceed.
Last planning board members, if they have any comments or questions? Because then I'd like to discuss next steps after that. Can we, one of the discussion of the next steps from where you think we are?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, the public hearing is still open. I would, you know, we have to prepare a resolution for the site plan, special use permit, and subdivision. It's not ready at the moment because public hearing is still open. I would suggest that we take public hearing tonight. If there's no further information that the board needs, you can consider closing the public hearing and then we can get started to draft on the resolution. I would like to have the DEC final determination letter. So Seth, when did you submit the most recent determination letter?
So that was actually just on April 15th or just 13th? Yeah, so that was actually just this month. So it does start the DEC's 90-day clock, which is consideration for the board whether we would like to adjourn until that time or... But we do actually anticipate, because we've done it through the consultant review process, a bit of a quicker review from DEC because we have provided them with a lot of information, the consultant motion. So, but, you know, they may stick to their 90 days and it may take that much time. And as Jim had just mentioned, or the last app that I mentioned, there is that 10-day period as well. After 90 days, they have 10 additional days.
So I did take a talk to Gretchen before the meeting started just to kind of understand the next few agendas. So if it's 90 days, April 13th would probably be around, probably around July 13th-ish, depending on 30 or 31 days. So if the public hearing is closed tonight, planning board would have to issue a decision, at least on the subdivision, by 62 days where it would be automatically approved based on New York State law. This can be extended by mutual consent with the applicant. I would ask if the applicant would consider granting a potential extension just in case it's needed for drafting a resolution until July 21st, planning board meeting? If we can get it done sooner, we can, but it just kind of gives us a little buffer room and gives DEC a little buffer room, so.
Is there that, Sean?
I have a question about filtration. It was mentioned somewhere down the line that this wastewater treatment is subject to a tertiary filtration system? And that's not a sand filtration, it's a fabric filter?
I certainly would try to answer your question, but I prefer to take down and get you that information back. I just, I don't want to speak on behalf of the business.
Okay, it's just that I, things that I've learned since the presentation was made back in July, there are some filtration options that are better than others at removing things like microplastics and pharmaceuticals. And I know there were a couple of things that were brought up by the public and I just want to ensure that we're doing the best that we can for our environment.
We'll provide tertiary treatment information at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
QL 467 Acro Road, Acro of third level filtration. Just in light of everything that's going on in Red Hook, the application for Rhinebeck Villas, which is going to require another wastewater treatment plant that's similar in volume, from my understanding, to the one proposed on Rockledge. I think that the town of Rhinebeck needs to seriously consider the level that the town is going to set for this putting wastewater into our bodies of water, our drinking water and the headlands of these various marshes. Fallsburg Creek currently originates on the Rockledge property and is clean, you know, all the way till it joins up with Fly Marsh currently. So that's a, that's a big change. And this is an opportunity to really set the bar high and make sure that any future wastewater treatment plants, starting with this one, address that extra high level of filtration so that we don't end up with problems down the line.
Anyone else? I would ask my planning board members, what are your thoughts about closing the public hearing this evening?
Now, we should close the public meeting. Do you?
Is there anyone opposed to closing the public hearing at this time?
There are waiting to be shorted. We have to comment on current question, correct?
I believe that...
We're pleased to reopen it again, correct?
We could, you could choose to reopen the public hearing in the future.
Yeah, if some new...
If new information came along that led you to believe that you should reopen the public hearing, you would be free to do that.
Yeah, I think there's been ample opportunity for people to air their concerns and I hope everyone understands that we are listening and we want to ensure that the best outcome results from this application. So I would be comfortable closing the hearing.
Anyone else?
I agree. I feel the story decision at this time.
Is there, is there still opportunity for a public comment on that?
This evening?
Yes. Can I make a comment? It's too late.
Just stay out of the water. That's why I gave you a chance before.
I'd like to wait till the last one. Patty, like toilet in the 221 Road. I just, with respect to closing the public hearing, the question that I have had throughout this process has been about the details of the wastewater treatment plant. It seems that those details are not yet available to the public. And because they're not available to the public yet, I feel like we have not had opportunity to review them and comment on them. So for me, it seems inappropriate to close the opportunity for the public to comment on that. That's what I'm asking. So please allow us to see the final plans for the wastewater treatment and analyze them and make comment. Thanks.
Seth, do you want to comment on that as to what has been made available? And what if you anticipate that there will be any additional information?
I could certainly comment on what has been made available. I know that all of the engineers' reports and all of their plans in the state, they were maybe a month ago or two months ago, have been submitted and they are of public record and available. I can certainly inquire about any updates and I can request those updates from our project team and certainly submit those as well. They are in process. You know, it is an evolution with any outside agency as they tend to comment and we need to respond. So that's really all I can offer.
Is there any to... I just wanted to confirm, does that address your question?
It means that, it means to me that the plans are not available to the public to review yet.
Well, they have been made available all of them.
Previous plans, not the plans, you know, when I called the New York City DEC, they said that the plans are not available, that the DEC did not have the plans. So I would just like confirmation that the actual wastewater treatment engineering plans of what is going to be implemented are available to the public.
All right, Seth, can you follow up on that, out where there's a disrequency? And as we said before, closing the public hearing this evening does not mean that with new information, we could not go back and reopen it. So they're not mutually exclusive. Edna?
Edna Lockman, 28, Hagerdale Road. It's my understanding, and Seth, you might be able to help me with this, when the DEC has reviewed all of the submitted plans and are ready to render a permit, there is an opportunity for the public to access that information and to ask for a public hearing on that information. And I also think that you can ask to be notified as a member of the public by the person at the DEC who is, you know, running this particular project. You can ask to be notified that this information is now available at the DEC. Is that your understanding?
It is my understanding that the DEC does have a comment period for a speedies discharge permit. So I do believe that is accurate and correct. And I do believe that you may be able to get on with this, but I'm not certain as far as how you can reach out as an independent public to have DEC, you know, provide you that information and details. I'm certain that, you know, reaching out to the DEC themselves, they'd be able to guide you on that.
Kim, any comments?
Seth, is there anything that's prototypical or experimental about this system? Or is it pretty much a straightforward treatment system that you would find in a large residential building like this?
I think that you're referencing some of the information that was provided by Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority when they were here for the board and public is a good basis for that. One of the things they noted about this is that, you know, there are standards that are set for discharge requirements. This project will meet or exceed all of those standards. So that's the basis to start with, is that there's, this wastewater treatment plant will meet all of the required standards for the state and federal. The other part of that is that this, this treatment plan actually provides additional treatments that some other treatment plans don't. We do have primary, secondary, and tertiary treatment. That is not, you know, true of all other systems out there. So in relation to other systems, this one is actually a bit better, I would say, than the systems.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm not really sure about the DEC comment period. So Seth, when do you think you would get the final? Do you have like an idea when you would get those final approvals from DEC? Is that conditioned on the planning boards or is that expected soon?
It has been a standard practice for the planning board, as I understand it, to provide additional approvals for speedies discharge permits. Speedies discharge permits are, you know, they do take some time to process through. We do not have a specific timeline on that. We are just, you know, grinding through that process every day. So as far as a definitive, it's not like the jurisdictional determination where we have a clock, like a 90-day clock or anything like that. It's my anticipation that because we do have that DEC jurisdictional determination, 90-day clock going now, and that may bring us to later in the year, that it is likely we will have, you know, some, certainly some feedback and information at that time.
No, I was just looking at, so the sewer system report from WSP, the water supply system report and all that is online on the planning board page. If you go to the, if you go to the planning board page, up at the top, you can see the applications before the board. And all of the applications before us right now are listed here. It is available in the 41423 folder. There is a copy of the sewer system report, the water system report, and all some of the things. I believe that's the most up-to-date copy. So the reports are, they're all reported here.
And my response is that 41423 is a few years, a couple of years ago, and I think that the DEC has some managed requirements, and WSP may have done some additional things. And I just think it's fair to the public to be able to see a final engineering plan of the treatment plant and make comments on it.
Seth, you may follow up to make sure that we have the most current information on the website, correct?
Yes.
So, do you want to...
Stay with me.
Or you start wearing a platform?
Seth, actually, in that, the 91-page report, or the DEC conversations that you've had, thank you very much for sharing the remapping of the different wetlands. Was there any hydraulic connection identified between Wetland F and any of the wetlands not on the Rockledge property?
I have not read the 91-page report. That just came in a few days ago.
Okay. Because I would, so, from the beginning, one of our major concerns is that a lot of what is happening on the property will have a large impact on, off the property in terms of the waste discharge and the traffic and things like that. So, it's interesting to me that the DEC, it's like, everything we see to date has been about what's happening on the property, not what's happening as a result of the discharge into the wetlands behind my house, for example. So, I would love to see that before there are any connections with any of our wetlands. Thank you.
I guess, just want to point out, just that, you know, Wetland F, which is the conversation here, has always been the DEC, you know, delineated wetland, identified wetland. And the only comments that we've received from the DEC currently are about these wetlands here, and they are in relation to off-site wetlands, which are these, just located off-site are those current pool areas. And they are connected to these wetlands, which is why they are reported to the DEC. So, they are looking at that.
And, sorry, you had mentioned with Wetland A and its communication with whatever it is, C or G there, that there was a, some sort of a distance factor? Could you explain a little bit more about that? If it's beyond a certain distance, it's not considered to be contiguous? Is that...
I don't want to misspeak, and that detailed information, which I will submit that report to this board so that they have all of that information, it's, I believe, 150 meters, I believe is how that works, of hydraulic connection, and there isn't a hydraulic connection for 150 meters through the stretch of what is kind of a drainage corridor.
Right.
From one to the other.
Okay.
And because of that distance, that's why they make the separation.
And I think the underlying question is the fact that there's an outfall right at the edge of the property that drains into a previously an intermittent stream, which is going to become less intermittent? And what's the proximity between that outfall and the non-adjacent wetland? And does that change the calculus?
Understood. I'm sure that that will be evaluated in the jurisdictional determination.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time. Someone should make that motion?
To close, I'll second it.
Motion in the second. I think I will call the board on this, correct?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
No, I'm agreeing to overclose the public hearing as of right now.
Okay. With the understanding, as I've stated before, that if new information becomes available, we will reopen the public hearing at that time.
I think that's fair. Aye.
Okay. Delise?
I agree based on knowing that, so yes, aye.
And let me just say, that is not unusual, and it should be expected in any situation like this. So, we're not making an exception here. We're simply following what is normal procedure, and I will ride.
So, Melody, sorry if I cuss you, if you want to continue. So, again, so, given that there is a subdivision on this application, you know, and I just spoke about how there are automatic approvals after 62 days, so, again, just wanted to confirm for the record that we have an extension, mutually agreed upon an extension until at least July 21st?
We agree with that, absolutely.
Anything else? So, do we now proceed to schedule another meeting?
Yes, I would think so to discuss the draft resolution.
Start discussing the draft resolution.
So, I would assume that we continue on the monthly schedule? Does that work?
Yeah, two weeks would be a little quicker to turn that around.
Okay, all right. So, may I have a motion to continue discussing this application, because we're not continuing the public hearing to the, to the May, what is it?
19.
Pardon?
May 19.
May 19, may. May, have that motion?
So, motion in the second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And as you get that additional information, it's been requested this evening, any updates that you can provide, or stay with and provide with to the public?
Absolutely will, thanks. Thank you.
We are now picking up two pending applications that were put on the agenda for discussion only. The first being Ryan Beck Villas LLC, New York State, 9G, and Middle Road. Site plan, special determination, good conditions.
Good evening. Sean Kemp off the head of the applicant, Ryan Beck Villas. On our end, I have four bullet point items. I just wanted to bring them word up to speed on. One isn't one of my bullet points, is the JD letter that we've been talking a lot about tonight. We have submitted a request for jurisdictional determination. We haven't received a response yet, but the time is, there's still some time for the DEC to get back to us with respect to that issue. I believe at the last meeting, there was some conversation about the banquet hall and the continental breakfast area. We just wanted to clarify that it's not going to be a full-service restaurant. Right now, what we're considering is having continental breakfast made available for guests, but what we're going to do is, we want to wait to get the F1 data back from DEC to figure out whether or not it's something that we're, that's a use that we're going to want to have at the property. Because if we're right near limits, we're, instead of having to rework the calculations that we've already done, and the permits that, you know, we had in mind, then we might just dispense with that option.
Dispense with the continental breakfast?
With the continental breakfast option, yeah.
Because the correspondence from the health department really suggested you were pushing the envelope there, and they were going to have to relook at it all over again.
Correct. And we'd like to avoid that if possible. So, the idea is to get some more data feedback from the DEC regarding F1, and then make a determination based on that data.
And then, if we were not to use that space for that at all, that would, what, reduce the square footage in that building, or what, or would that be good?
I think that the space, the way that, I'd have to talk to Rob Dupont about that. I think that the space could still be utilized for other meetings, gatherings, things like that, but just not have that use included in it with respect to the demand for water and things of that nature.
Yeah, I just think you'd have to be careful about expanding the uses to meetings and other things like that, too, because that changes...
I'm familiar with that.
I bet you are. We want to be very careful.
Yes. Understood, and I think that's for everybody's benefit. The second point that I had was, there was a question about the archaeological survey, and whether or not it went up to where our well is located, and it did in fact include that area. I believe Gretchen helped facilitate, Gretchen and Jim helped facilitate the Notice and Tent to Be Lead Agency, which that went out at the beginning of the month, April 4th. So, we appreciate that very much, you guys acting on that before today's meeting. And then, we also mentioned at the last meeting that, I believe we mentioned this at the last meeting, that with respect to site visit, we went and had our engineer stake where the buildings would be located on the property, so, you know, when the site visit is conducted, hopefully sooner rather than later, you're out there, you're not just standing in the field trying, and, you know, someone's pointing to you, this is what, the building's going to be over there, or whatever, you'll actually be able to see stakes in the ground, get a little bit better understanding of the orientation of the project. That's it on my list, as far as housekeeping goes, and then whatever other comments that the planning board has, or questions, I can get answers for you on.
Jim?
Well, I haven't done a detailed review since last time. Nothing's really changed. We're in kind of a due process. I did note, obviously, the full-service dining facility and the number of seats from the county health department. You'll have to figure out, you know, kind of where you land on that. Other than that, yeah, I think we had a number of conversations last time, things to look into, including the secondary access that was discussed, which I had noted as well, and a couple of other things, but I know you would receive the copy of my notes and if not, let me know.
Yes, we did.
But nothing new since our last discussion. Okay.
Any more questions, comments from the waiting room?
I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned that there will be a balcony upstairs for guests to access their guest rooms. Is that correct? The stairway and...
It's external available.
An elevator that goes to a balcony, an open balcony.
Yeah. So, do you mean there's going to be like a walkway area that would connect all rooms?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
And, as I understood it, you did that for a reason. In other words, it is not an enclosed hallway.
That's correct.
Because what was the reason for that?
Well, I don't want to misspeak. Rob spoke to that issue, Rob Dupont spoke to that issue, but I believe that that does not get factored into the square footage of the actual units. And then, my reluctance to answer your question at first was, some units do have balconies as well.
Right.
I'm going to backside.
I'm talking about the...
I understand, yes, I understand what you're talking about now.
Right.
Yeah, but I believe that was to satisfy square footage requirement.
So, a way to provide access that is within the square footage that's allowed?
Correct.
And why not ask for a variance so that you could have an enclosed walkway? I mean, I'm thinking of, you know, belting rain or snow, and somebody trying to hold their luggage along an open balcony?
I think it was, I can't, I can't, I can get an answer to you. I don't want to speculate.
What else? Because this is discussion only at this point, it's not a public hearing, but if there's anyone here that would like to make a comment, we'd be happy to hear it at this time. I don't know if anybody wishes to offer anything for discussion.
I just, I have one thing. The access, it was supposed to be the fire department access to the back of some of the buildings. Is that going to come off of Middle Road?
So, the discussion last time was, I believe the discussion last time was right around here, yeah.
Yeah. I kind of like that because, you know, I think a lot of people who come and stay in hotels, they like to run.
Yeah.
And you're not going to want to run along Route 9, Route 19 here. I like that you had a footpath connection between the Villas and Fort Brother's Restaurant.
Correct.
Because that's something that, you know, people aren't going to get in the car and drive somewhere. And likewise, having that amenity where people can get somewhere on foot, doesn't necessarily have to be the center of the village, but I think that's a, it's a bonus.
That's a very good point, and I agree. It does give them access, guests, to the Middle Road, and then that goes back to a very nice area.
Yeah, Hook Road, yeah, there's a lot that can be enjoyed, for sure.
And that's true. The other side of it is, it complicates that intersection.
It does, yeah.
And I just think we need to be careful about that, because you've already got kind of a crossroads there, introducing another road coming up there. I understand it's intended only for emergency purposes, but, you know, we have to make sure that it's designated as such, and only as maybe a footpath.
Correct.
Because making it something that people could just go in and out and use it as another means of ingress and egress, I think, would be problematic.
Right.
Absolutely.
Are there any other opportunities for trails on-site, like pathways within the property that might serve a similar purpose?
I'll visit that with Andrew and the team, because I think that there could be some added value there, for sure.
It's around Hill, is that where you live?
I remember it as being difficult to navigate.
Maybe, maybe when you get a little bit further in the back, it does get a little tricky, but I guess we'll find out more at the site visit.
On the entrance, traffic is pretty heavy coming from the north, pretty quick right there. Is there any thought of adding a right turn lane into there so that people are coming along instead of stopping, backing up, they can just smoothly get into the site?
Yeah, I believe the idea of determining, Jim, you probably speak to this, too. That's been an issue that, in connection with this project, has been looked at for some time now, and it's still actually under review. So, that is probably something that's on the table.
Jim did a preliminary look at that whole corridor several years ago. One of the issues that was raised was that there is certainly developable properties along here that, where they ought to be developed, have the potential to really impact traffic along there. We certainly went through it extensively with the stamp now, who needs property? So, it is, it is a consideration, and I think has always been there.
Correct.
We brought in the New York State DOT before we really got really into what they were doing, and they were talking, they were talking about rezoning, I think, is when we actually started talking about this. We talked to DOT essentially about the entire corridor from the intersection, from intersection to intersection, such as stoplight to stoplight, because we knew that this was coming, actually, we've been doing this, I don't know, for a couple of years now. New reviews is coming into the stamp property, the Dave's Tree Service, which if you've noticed, there's a sign out there that says "Don't left turn" in the tree service driveway. So, DOT is looking at all of this. There are issues, not so much here, but where I think the Dave's with the vertical visibility, because you've got a little kind of elevation of the road, which past is, it's not as much here as further away. But DOT will take a look at this. I'm guessing if you're going to put in emergency access, create an ad, you'll probably take a quick look. I'd be a little concerned about it coming out right at the corner there. I'd prefer to see a pushback, I know that puts us in a little up in wetland buffer, but maybe since it's, I assume it's not going to be paved, it might be just, you know, paper, you know, paper scum.
And there was talking about this type of, this is actually...
There's a plastic, I'm not in that world, but it's almost like a material that allows grass to grow through, but it keeps the ground firm.
No grass, no...
There's, there's plastic grins and things you can put. I actually did it at my property. Maybe this is one of those, you know, considerations where we talk about a trade-off between, you know, wetland intrusion and, you know, safety of vehicles coming in and out for the, you know, hopefully, kind of never have to be used for emergency access, but also it could be used if you get to Middle Road to put them back a little bit away from 9G and cars that might take a quick turn there. If all we're doing is putting some things in the ground, it's still essentially allowing everything to drain through. Maybe that's a circumstance worth considering. I'd certainly be back to the board, but I wouldn't be super troubled if we could all right at the, right at the intersection, and just push back a bit, because I do think cars can take that turn on the Middle Road quickly. So, might that be a concern of mine. But again, we'll have to talk about that as we kind of see where we intend.
Yeah, I'd like to certainly back to the fire department to see, you know, what's the best alignment for them.
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Are you content to continue this as discussion only at this point until you resolve some of the issues? What do you want to do with this, Sean?
Well, I'd like to move... Well, I'd like to move it to a public hearing, but there are some issues, obviously, that need to be addressed. Kim, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I remember at the last meeting, one of my concerns was, you know, the inclusion of the second service entrance. And my thought was that, you know, before you open the public hearing, you should have a more detailed plan, you know, more what's going to be in line. So I think, you know, you do still have that issue out there about where the second entrance is going to be, and then, you know, understanding what the banquet hall is going to be. So, you know, I do think those are completely...
Two big, two big technical items to address.
I think so.
Okay.
So if you're okay, I think we'll reschedule you for May, what, 19th? May 19th? I hope that we can have some answers to those questions by that time.
Very good. Thank you.
May I have a motion to schedule continuation of the discussion to May 19? So, both, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstention, please, please.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. And the last discussion for this evening is local land partners, Brazil, Cedar Heights Road, two lots subdivision, minor subdivision.
Good evening, Chris Montalvo, good evening. I provided a brief email this morning, just a brief update, not a lot of new info. Still waiting for Central Hudson to get back to us. I had a productive conference with Kim and John Lyons, and we agreed that's really key to moving forward here. And once we have that nailed down, we'll be able to provide a lot, a lot more detail.
Okay. Jim, Kim, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think, I think the main issue, and it's certainly for figuring out how to best develop the property, will be figuring out where that entrance is going to be for Central Hudson, figure out what Central Hudson will agree upon. And I, we did talk with Chris on Zoom about, you know, working through an ODA with the town, but I think the main, the first issue to result is how the access should be, you know. I think our thought is that, you know, getting it quick, you know, kind of more of a direct line, rather than kind of up. So I think, we'll see what Central Hudson says, and go forward with the planning.
All right. Planning board members, any questions or comments?
Does Central Hudson usually get back to you, or is it kind of...
Like everybody else.
At their leisure.
They, they asked for some more info, to clarify a few things, two weeks ago. So they're, when I emailed, they didn't get back to me.
That's the thing, really, for, you know, for, when you get to it.
The one item to keep in mind, if we're talking about where the driver location is going to go, is it is on a curve. I've been out there. And it's a pretty good curve, and it's got vegetation all the way up to the street. So, you know, as you're going forward, if you're looking at, you know, spending time and money on redesigning, I would talk with the, is that town? No, I'm not. Yeah, talk with the town highway department supervisor, and just get his input on sightlines and things like that. I think that's a tricky location, even where you have to drive, it looks a little better there, and where the right way goes.
Probably gets, probably gets him sooner than you'd...
Okay, gets him earlier.
Yeah, having his guidance before you actually get into design is smart. Saves your money along the way. Anything else? Could I have a motion then to continue this discussion at the May?
I was going to say, do you want to continue? I just want to put it back on the agenda once they have more.
Well, I'll ask, first, do you think you'll have answers in a month, or do you want in two months?
I'm hoping within a couple of weeks, but if we don't, if there's no indication of getting anything, then we'll need a little more time, and certainly, you know, ask for...
We can continue in this discussion only at this point.
Yeah.
All right. May I have a motion to continue this discussion at the May, November 19?
So.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstention, please, please. Thank you. Under old business, we have Bach and Schipler. I received nothing that indicates they've gotten...
No, they said DEC is going to be coming out this week, so.
Just coming out. Okay.
So it'll be on the next one.
All right. So as I indicated earlier, Jim would like to run through his annual report, answer endless questions, and it did, I did recall, and I caught up, we should have brought this under correspondence and announcements. We also, Gretchen, received a request from Seth and Mark this morning regarding the G-scale train. And they are requesting, I don't have the email in front of me, requesting to...
Elevator.
Do you want to pull that up? Move it back, I think, the meeting until June. They would like to be able to wrap up, I think they're closing in on the end of the construction of the original approved train. And they would like to time it in such a way that when we make the full board site visit to inspect the location for the G-scale train, that we'll be able to see what has already been done there, and get a full vision for the entirety of the work that's taking place on the property. So it seems reasonable to me.
Is that a ride?
I, I don't know. Is it worth more than $50? I don't know, I don't know. Well, time will tell.
There's only one way we can get back in, the woods.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not going to walk back.
All right. Well, it's too bad Seth has left, he did that request.
Take the train back.
Take the train back. So what?
June 2nd.
June 2nd. So may I have a motion to, do we schedule a public hearing? Is tonight to be public hearing?
It is May 5th.
May 5th. Okay, so we will conduct a public hearing on June 2nd. All right, may I hear that motion? So, thanks.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So I'll turn it over to Jim, who wants a little bit of our topic.
Yes, I will go as fast as I can, but I'd like to get this annual report off my plate, and then we'll talk about, talk about the DEC. So the annual report, something we started a couple of years ago, just so you can see the amount of work that goes into this. And I do forward this on the town board for their information, so they know just how much work the board does. I do one of these for you, and it's HAPAC as well. We just talk about who the members are, discuss the roles and responsibilities, just reminding everyone about what we do. We hold meetings twice a month, we have pre-conference meetings essentially every time we have a planning board meeting. And reminding everyone that all materials are available on the town planning board page, as well as video reports on Panda. This is just an old kind of flow chart of the submission process. We've actually, Gretchen has put together a new one, so we'll be working on getting that finalized and useful. Just explaining the process, and how things work. This is the part that I kind of like to show everybody. There were 74 applications that you reviewed in 2024, that's up from 56 in 2023, so you're reviewing even more than did previous year, so it hasn't been very, it wasn't a very busy year. Got specifically 40 new applications down slightly from the 48 in 2023. So that shows you there are a lot of applications that are continuing from year to year. A lot of these bigger projects, and like your reviews. We had 24 meetings, did 99 public hearing sessions. That includes every public hearing we do, not that there was a new one every time. That was up from maybe 6 in 2023, and down from 113 in 2022. New and old business, excluding referrals and others, there were 47 presentations that were presented to the board. And then these are just some, you know, statistics on the other referrals that we do to HAPAC, that's just kind of planning, the CAV and the WAC, so you can see what the details that goes into these reviews. This is pretty much the same as it was before, the new application types coming in, we have a lot of individual structure improvements, minor subdivisions, major subdivisions, accessory dwellings, we had number support courts last year, and a lot of commercial signage that came in, as well as conversion of spaces to other uses, both of the resident, mostly residential properties. We had Rockledge, don't have to go into the detail of that, and Ryan McMillan's, the two big projects that we reviewed last year. And then for 2025, we expect the pace of referrals to remain high, but potentially slow a little bit, just given the way things have been going, with the economy and some other trends that I'm seeing across the country. We do expect that the types of projects will remain generally the same, as what we have been seeing. Probably a lot of residential improvements and additions, you know, heat pumps and things like that, to the extent that we see those. We did want to note in our general findings, there was notable amount of work that was done again in 2024 on properties without the proper permits, that required planning board review and approval after work had been completed. A lot of the work has been on constrained lots, a lot of the projects require CVA variances, a number of the projects require CVA determinations, because conflicts are unknowns in the definitions of other language in the code, which is something we're starting to work on again. We had worked on that before COVID, and then that ceased for a while. We are picking up, working on, trying to make some updates to that code. Many of the projects have been on store properties or structures, and just knowing that the world of HAPAC, the CAV, WAC is vital, and the referrals we make, pretty much at every meeting we have, on conversion. New for 2025, just a reminder, we have the new DEC wetlands, the general pool regulations, which I'll talk about a little more in a second with Ed's questions. We have the new Dutchess County Aquifer Law, which really won't apply to anyone unless they're doing a commercial application, and they're over in Aquifer. That was just approved at the end of last year. Short-term rentals are now permitted in the town, and they are in the code. And HAPAC released their handbook just a month ago. So that's available now for people to take a look at as they're undertaking work on store properties. And that was my two-minute group. Thank you. Just going to show you a lot of work done by this board on an annual basis.
And I can say that I heard, I don't know any details, but I know that, I think it is Brian and Ed, maybe somebody from the fire department, started making the inspections for the short-term rental applications. And the word that I've heard from people that have undergone the inspections is that it seems to be going quite nicely. No one seems to be finding it to be a burden. I can't speak for Brian, but the people who are being inspected say it seems to go fine, you know, and the things that they expected to find, like missing exit signs and stuff like that, are being observed. So I don't think that, I haven't heard any other feedback. I haven't heard negative feedback on it either internally or externally. So that's a good thing, because I think there was a lot of concern about how onerous the process is going to be in terms of how many people are applying, and what's the, you know, inspection process going to be. So maybe we can get some more information from Brian on that going forward, that just supplements that it is new, and what it seems to be moving along.
And then the other item I just wanted to touch on tonight, the New York State DEC jurisdictional determination guidance. Ed had asked a couple of questions, so, actually it asked last time, we put together questions to send to DEC, and I thought it would be good for us to just go through some things first, and then you can decide if you still want to submit questions or not. So the first one that Ed had asked in the email that he was, if the DEC plans to provide additional guidance and/or mapping in the future, so we can accurately judge when to refer something, and if so, if they identify when this might be the case. As far as I know, they are not planning to do any additional mapping that will be public or available for us. The mapping that we have is what is available now, which was their, their formal freshwater mapping before, which is now informational freshwater mapping only. The informational mapping is to be used for informational purposes only, and cannot be relied upon to determine the presence or absence of freshwater wetlands regulated by DEC, which is one of the reasons why we are referring these pretty much anytime we find a wetland within a couple hundred feet of potential disturbance in the ground. Because the DEC wetland regulations require wetland permits to be applied for if you are disturbing any ground within 100 feet of a wetland. But the new law actually extends the area that they're regulating to 300 feet from a wetland, or 800 feet from a vernal pool. Problem with that is, I have no idea where there are vernal pools. And what you saw with Sean's presentation earlier is they found a vernal pool connected to one of their wetlands that they didn't know was there. I can't tell you if there's a vernal pool, I have no mapping on that. And the only way to determine a vernal pool, or some of the other information I'm going to show you in a second, which is the unusual importance criteria, is to actually have someone who knows what they're doing, which is not me, go out to these wetlands and determine whether or not these are vernal pools.
And you have to do it at the right time of year.
There is that. I can't make a determination on any of this. The only way that someone can be absolutely clear that they're not violating state law wetland law is to actually have the DEC do this, and they will do it for free, but you have to do it obviously on their schedule, or have the consultant do it, which is what Rob Reg is doing, because they've already been working on it.
Jim, can I just add something to that, if you don't mind? I just took a CLE today on just land use updates, and one of them was the DEC wetlands. And for the vernal pool aspect of it, they said that it really even has to be the property owner that has to request that jurisdictional determination for vernal pools. Like, it can't just be like, a neighbor that has a suspicion that there's a vernal pool on there. I'm not sure if it applies to municipalities as well, but I thought that was kind of interesting, that it has to actually be the property owner. I think it's because they have to go out onto the property to actually look for. One of the things I have to look for is if it's like a productive vernal pool with, based, which is based on account.
And I'm not going to have to do account, so, it's not my thing, I'm not doing it. So we have some general mapping that shows us where we can do this. Parcel access also has mapping, so we're now using DEC wetlands, and we're using the ACOE wetlands. And while it does say that these have to have an area of 12.4 acres, the size is greater, it has in 2028, it will decrease to 7.4 acres, the thing about the wetlands is that they want to look at them if they meet any of the 11 unusual importance criteria. All right, so they're still maintaining a 100-foot adjacent area, and that hasn't changed, we have 100 foot wetland buffer in the town. But they now have these 11 unusual importance criteria. And if you look at them, I can tell you about a couple of these, I cannot tell you about all of them. I can tell you if the wetland is within a significant flooding area, I can tell you if it's within an urban area, I cannot tell you if there were plants there, were animals. I can't classify it as a classical wetland. I can't classify anything as a vernal pool, I can tell you if it's in a floodway. Previously mapped, we have the informational mapping, and I can't do a water quality assessment. So again, in order to know if someone does or doesn't meet part of these 11 criteria of unusual importance, the only way to do it is to go out and do it. And that's why I've been referring everything. So while it does say that they are still only regulating within 100 foot adjacent area, the new rule does say that they are extending their regulated adjacent area to 300 feet for nutrient core wetlands, and 800 feet for vernal pools. Again, I don't know where a vernal pool is, 800 feet is a long distance. That's why when we had the porch committed, it was 800 feet from a wetland area that may or may not contain a vernal pool, I don't know. So I can't make that determination. And nutrient core wetland, the only way to know if it's nutrient core is to watch and see what actual vegetation is in that wetland. And again, I don't have that information. The only way to be able to be sure that you're meeting the law is to have someone go out and look at it, which unfortunately is the reason we're referring all of these to the DEC.
But they don't go look at it?
Yes, they do. The DEC will do it for you for free.
But for each of these things we've been referring, they've been sending somebody out to look?
Not necessarily, but it is on them to make a determination within 90 days if they want to do it. And if they don't, then they have to, that's why they're getting through next. So the procedure itself, the department has 90 days when an applicant submits something, but they can extend that determination date if they decide that they need to, for instance, if someone submits at the dead of winter, and they can't go out and make a legitimate assessment. But if they say, "Look at the mapping," and say, "Hey, this might be a vernal pool," or a wetland of importance, they could then say, "We're going to have to wait another 90 days until we can get out there and take a look at it." It's up to the department, as far as I can tell, to make that determination. If they don't reply in 90 days of the submission of the JD, which actually is a pretty easy process online, the requister has to track that 90 days, and then send in a certified mail, send in certified mail to the director of the Division of Fish and Wildlife at the DEC, asking for a formal response. If the department fails to provide that response within 10 business days of that certified mail going to them, then that subject parcel shall be deemed waived and valid for a period of five years from the date of the waiver, which is what we had heard earlier today.
So can they come back five years later and say, "Well, we've changed our mind now"?
They could come back five years and one day later, start over again, yes.
A bit, but you've already done your thing, so what?
That's the...
Did you build anything else, additions to your house?
If someone comes in in five and a half years and wants to do something, we would tell them they'd have to go back out, assuming the law is still the law that it is today. They'd have to go back and submit for jurisdictional determination.
When we put in that information, I guess, to know that, I'm just thinking like in our file today, right, because we're right there.
Are you saying noting it on an application?
Yeah, we have to know, you know.
Noted on the approved application.
Yeah.
We should probably say, "No, not again, we're figuring out the process."
Yeah, I was just thinking out of the box, I'm like...
Well, this is why we're asking for the letter, or something. We need, we need something in the file that says, you have a letter, or you don't, right. Like, absolutely, something needs to be in there.
Wait, have you tracked that with everything? I think...
That's a great job.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work, Gretchen.
Oh, you won.
Keep up the good work.
So, you know, none of this technically, I think, falls on the town, although we are, you know, kind of party to it, the planning board reviews this, this is responsibility of the property owner to go through. If they were to absolutely adamant this date that they're not going to do this, I guess that we would have to decide how we want to handle that, have to look into it further, and some legal ramifications, or, well, as can, we haven't had that issue yet. But this is why we're sending everything off for review, because 800 feet is a long way.
It is.
And any, and any wetland could contain, they have a vernal pool connected to or near any wet area. So I am bearing outside of the... So I am bearing outside caution. We are asking all applicants to submit their jurisdictional determination when they come in for a pre-conference. So assuming that they take a month to come in to get on the agenda, that's 30 days. By the time we schedule the public hearing, that's 60 days. We're starting to really work our way through that 90-day process. By the time we get to the public hearings, we're trying not to have this work on. And a lot of people don't come back within 30 days of a pre-con. They can take even longer. So we could have some coming in 90 days. I'm already having it, you know.
Is it free to use?
Not if you use the D E C. And that's part of what they say, it's free. We'll do it for free.
Yeah.
But you have to do it on their.
You gotta win the year.
The surprises are exactly like 10 bucks on.
Well, they do if you need a permit. So if you need a permit, then you have to apply for money, but the jurisdictional determination has no cost. And the vast majority is, I think they're just gonna be going through mapping, you know, the most sensitive mapping. They're not gonna be going out to the vast majority of the properties, I think.
That could still take 100, 100 days. Or they could ask for more, more time. Will you email that?
Well, I'll send this to everybody. Yeah, I threw it together yesterday, so.
I just think it's outrageous.
The state wants to further protect wetlands. I think they estimated this would protect another million acres of wetlands in the state, something like that. And the intent was to do that. They anticipated, we had this would have pretty significant, you know, referrals.
You said they were hiring three additional employees.
That was what I heard on the web on there.
So a million acres, three employees.
Well, million more.
I was glad to hear that they're adding protections for vernal pools, which are ecologically very important and often overlooked geological features. But I don't get the 800 feet. Like I don't see what issue they were trying to resolve with that.
And they're not actually protecting vernal pools, I don't think, unless a property owner says, well, I have this pool that shows up in the springtime in my woods, you know, so tell me whether you have jurisdiction. But most people don't even know about vernal pools and I don't think most people are gonna bring them to the attention of the D E C. So how are they gonna be protected?
If they determine that there's a vernal pool on your property, is it an 800-foot buffer?
But how could they determine it?
They're using, they're using, they're using, there is mapping. They are using role mapping. We have informational mapping. We cannot use it to make an actual determination of whether or not someone does or doesn't have the button. It's for informational purposes only. So if I see something with the 800 feet, I'm just saying we should go check to the D E C to make sure because your wetland could contain a vernal pool.
We have informational mapping that shows vernal pools?
No, I have informational mapping that generally shows where wetlands are.
What about ours?
And I'm talking about vernal pools.
I have no, there's no information on vernal pools that's available.
What about our natural resources inventory?
It would be the same as what's available online between, I think, parcel access and our I would use the same information.
There's that a box that you can pick for vernal pools to get them to show up on the map?
Eventually, mom must.
Well.
But anyway, so I'm just letting you know what's available, that, you know, if you would ask one to submit some questions, I mean, we certainly can. I don't know that it's going to result in a lot of feedback. This is the mapping that we have. I think I showed this once before, just really quickly. These are the informational maps. It's essentially the same as all the mapping we've had for a long time.
Is it available online?
Yeah, so, yeah, so in the document, so it's available online. So you can see wherever the wetlands are. And this is what I use along with parcel access to determine if someone should go in and ask for.
This is on the town's website?
No.
Well, it's like david.gaf. Oh, you're sorry.
So I'm gonna send this out to everyone so you can have it. So the Freshwater Wetlands Mapping Classification Act itself. If you go down to that page, you go to text of regulations, you can read then the regulation resources header.
I mean, to talk about this, this is what it is. This is the law. And Christian, I think Ed said this before, Christian had gone through it from C P L and kind of circled all of the statistics for the board to worry about. That's where the law is. This is the J D determination page. We give you all of the other links that you need. And I can add a link directly to this wetlands page if you want. So you can take a look at that. It pretty much follows what you find on parcel access. It's not 100% the same. But they tell you you can use this, you can use A C O E wetlands. So I use this and parcel access, which includes A C O E wetland areas. When I'm making determinations, I'm actually just submitting for a J D. And then this is a, this is a process chart, just so you can kind of see what the process is and what it goes to. All of which, I think, as we kind of start figuring this out, we will start trying to push out applicants and take them into their applications.
I think our building is a perfect example of that pre-meeting, getting that out there. That was pretty smooth.
And I don't expect we're gonna have an issue with a lot of these. It's just that we have to, we have to go through the process.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
I'll add the J S M measure.
I wonder, or whether our legislators read this and understood this when they said, yeah, the D E C should do this this way.
I wasn't actually tracking it as it was being written. I didn't learn about it, so this proves.
Protecting 8 million acres or, I mean, it sounds really good, but.
It's what you have to do or to keep that.
Thank you for your time, everyone. I appreciate it.
Gentlemen, we have two people here. Was there anything in particular this evening? You hung in for a long meeting, so.
I learned a lot about vernal pools.
And you feel better about that now?
I do. I have a question for you guys.
All right.
If you don't mind. Do you want me to do the formal?
I'm always interested when people hang in till midnight and don't comment on anything.
I go home, I'm just gonna chores for my wife.
You're being the ghost. She can watch.
Christopher Capo, I live at 22 Kenan Lane. I have a question about the water sewage treatment plants. Cause there are a couple of projects now, right?
In general.
And then there's the Villas, right? Obviously, it's sort of a lightning rod kind of topic for a lot of people because, you know, we all remember like Flint, Michigan, you know, and all these huge water problems. We don't want like miniature versions of that happening in the town. So my only request of the planning board is to, you know, we need to try very carefully. And it may even merit some dedicated discussion, you know, with the public. Like the one lady pointed out, she wanted, you know, she wanted as much information as possible. I don't even know how many of these plants we currently have in the town. You guys, I mean, are these the only two now?
I don't.
I don't think there's too many. The Villas have a little difference.
Village has its own treatment plant and the Mobile Home Park has a septic system with a sand bed that sends the ethyl and it gets treated and chlorinated and sent out to the Rhinebeck Field.
Yeah.
There's also Cone Road, which is a story that's regrettable.
Doesn't the Rhine Cliff Hotel have something? They're all in the process and.
Everything in Rhine Cliff has its own.
That's true.
One of the points I think you guys have to consider too, some of these are discharging into what they call intermittent streams, which as you know, means they're bone dry or blocked. So you go from something that's only got, you know, a few gallons of water in it to potentially hundreds of thousands of gallons per week, right? And a lot of the neighbors, their wells are in that vicinity, right? So naturally, whatever's in that water is gonna end up in the wells at some point. And you get into things like pharmaceuticals, somebody staying at one of these places or, you know, are they dumping drugs down the, you know, the facilities?
They could be saying about the residents.
Exactly, right? People working at the site, you know, pesticides, things like that, you know, let me just throw this extra stuff down the drain. So my only request, you know, because I'm near this thing too, right? I just want to make sure we're really, really careful about water quality.
Are you interested in joining the conservation advisory board?
Whatever you guys want.
There's an application online and you would apply to the town board? And they would appoint you and you could come to a monthly meeting where we look at things like this. And you bring up a very good point because these plants have to file for a speeding permit. And it's basically a permit from the state to dump pollutants into, into the waterway. And they have to meet certain criteria in order to do that and they have to maintain the permit over time. But it's, it seems as though they're always looked at individually without any consideration of what might be right next door.
Yes.
And, you know, the state has a standard where they think as long as you're, you know, within this, these parameters, everything should be fine. But we have the opportunity to take a closer look at that and say, yeah, maybe not in Rhinebeck. Or maybe we want to set an upper limit for particular waterways that let out into like Vanderburg Cove, which is a very sensitive part of the Hudson River.
Well, Greg, I think if I understand the roles and responsibilities of the C A B, they have the ability to be proactive and not just reactive.
Yes.
And so I would encourage you to take that to the C A B, this conversation, ask if they, because you know, we're now, as I indicated before, in the process of doing review of the zoning and planning process and the definitions and all of the other things that we confront. And this would be a timely exercise in terms of contributing to that broader exercise. So I would encourage C A B to take this up as an area of study and actually come back with some thoughts that can be shared with the town board. So if you would take that back to the C A B, that would be terrific.
Glad.
Thank you.
Final, real quick, I apologize. I know you got it delayed. I appreciate it.
Oh, this is real.
When you guys ask questions about, you know, how things are gonna look from the road or, you know, things like the lighting and whether it's like night sky and all that. These plants as well, like the one at Rhinebeck Field, and I'm bringing this up at the real public meeting. This is a package solution, right? The thing looks like a gigantic steel storage container, okay? It's gonna be perched up on a hill behind them, four brothers. Talk about the scenic district, people for the first time coming into Rhinebeck, they're gonna see this big steel box sitting there.
Looking at that.
Right? And now they're gonna say, we'll plant trees around and things. It's fine until the trees die, right? So.
It's like the ledges, the Royal Ledges on the way down to Hyde Park, they have one of these package systems that they can walk around it.
We don't want it to look like.
Well, we'll look forward to your comments when they get to be part of the public hearing. And you, sir?
No, I'm just here to see what's going on behind the scenes.
Maybe you can paint trees up.
Yeah, very well. Thank you both for covering and sharing your thoughts. They're very interesting. Anything else to come before the board? May I have a motion to adjourn? So much. All those in favor? I have a second motion, Mary. Thank you.